Okay, I need a motion to go back into open session for the committee of the whole meeting of August 25th, 2014.
Motion, second.
Second.
Reiker, motion, Forsyth, second.
Mr. Reiker?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Wick?
Yes.
Okay, we're now at open session. We have nothing further to discuss with the committee in the whole meeting or actions to take. Therefore, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the committee in the whole meeting.
Motion, second.
Motion by Forsyth, seconded by Hack to adjourn the August 25th, 2014 committee of the whole meeting. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiker?
Okay, motion carries. We are officially adjourned from that meeting, and you need to switch tapes and get notes for the next one, right?
Nope, I'm ready. Let's go.
All right. Let me turn the report on there. All right, this is the Village of Peatone, August 25th, 2014, regular village board meeting. I call this meeting to order and ask you to rise and say the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Reiker?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Okay, let the record show that we have a forum present and we may officially conduct business. First order being the approval or correction of the August 11th, 2014, regular village board meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented, or if you see a reason, please let us correct them, let us know what those corrections would be.
Motion to approve the minutes, second.
Motion by Forsyth, seconded by Wicker to approve the August 11th, 2014, regular village board meeting minutes as presented. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiker?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the accounts payable and the payroll. Trustees in your package, you have a payroll for the pay period ending August 16th, 2014, in the amount of $46,397.60. You also have bills in the general fund totaling $33,849.90, and another set of bills from the general fund totaling $33,333. Grand total of those two general fund bills are $69,173.90. In the water sewer fund, there are bills totaling $21,654.93. Grand total of the general fund and water and sewer fund bills is $88,828.20. I will entertain a motion to...
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Forsyth, no Forsyth, Reiker, to pay the bills as presented. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiker?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries of the bills paid and noted. This time, we have opportunity for public comment for any non-agenda item. In other words, if you're on the agenda later, that's when we're going to talk about that. Seeing that we have nobody present to talk about non-agenda items, we're going to move on to the reports, and we have the reports of the clerk collector and treasurer in there. If there are no questions on that...
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
I see the police pension fund had roughly a $10,000 drop in balance. Is that a one-time lump sum drop, or is that something you expect often into the future?
I don't know if... My shorter answer is, I don't know.
Okay.
I know that we... They probably had some expenses relative to the retirement and that kind of thing. It may be at one time, but I can find out.
Okay, I just, obviously, if it happens monthly, that could become a problem. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah. All right. Chief report, the chief is not here right now. Engineers report, Troy, where are we at?
The traffic signal phase one. I know I've said this before, but now we're really very close for the phase one approval.
No more questions they could ask us to change anymore?
I don't think they're going to ask us to change anymore. That's the good news.
That's the good news.
Geometries approved, you know, the minute study we need to finish up, and then we should be there. The good news is, we don't have to do a lengthy report, so they're not requiring that.
Good. Maybe something will start to speed up there. Could be. No, it won't be eight more years. It better be another year or two. All right. No old business under new business. We have an ordinance to act on a petition for special use permit to allow residential use above the first floor, commercial use at 209 North Second Street. Richard Hanson, petitioner. George, do you want to go over that?
Petitioner, Mr. Richard Hanson, has requested a special use permit to occupy the second floor of a commercial building for residential use. In addition, he has also requested a variance for reduction in minimum square footage of two of the three units. If the special use is denied, the variance petition is automatically void. Planning zoning commission conducted a joint public hearing for the depositions and generated individual findings and motions. Under the special use permit, the testimony indicated the petitioner wishes to construct three apartment units above the first floor commercial use on the property. Petitioner will make improvements to the exterior of the building, including trim, windows, doors, and painting to increase the historic character of the building. The building will meet all fire and building codes. While off-street parking is available in the downtown area, the property has sufficient space for parking onsite to accommodate the uses. Three residents were in attendance. One resident raised concerns regarding availability of parking and also water supply. The resident states he has low water volume and additional taps into the water main on Second Street could be a problem. Second resident questioned about... Had a question about the proximity of parked cars to the property line. A third resident stated she too is connected to Second Street Water Main and has low water supply pressure for neighbor uses its water. Steph noted they are unaware of any water supply issues in the general area of Second Street, and that the problems may be related to individual service lines. I've confirmed that with Mr. Bernard, which is relative to, we're not aware of any water supply or water issues generally on that water main on Second Street. The planning and zoning commission favors, forwards a favorable recommendation, five I's, zero N's, for approval of the special use permit with the following conditions: Efficiency apartments are prohibited; improved parking area; firm exterior improvements; reconditioned tint around the windows; installed crown molding in accordance with historic character of downtown; and painted garage door; screen air parking lot with natural screening; working performance with submitted floor plan and approved architectural plans; pythol, federal, state, and local laws; and the special use run of the land. The item tonight is action on petition for the special use permit to allow residential uses on the second floor. The planning and zoning commission has forwarded, as I said, a favorable recommendation, and in that recommendation, they have included their findings of fact. Should you agree with their recommendation, you may accept their findings of fact and simply make a motion. Should you disagree with that, with their recommendation, you will need to develop your own finding of fact.
Quick question, George. The efficiency apartments being prohibited, is that generally required under the current zoning ordinance, where we don't allow efficiency apartments, or where did that come from?
Our current ordinance allows efficiency apartments. I think the thrust of the planning and zoning recommendation was, they did not want... Efficiency apartments are very small apartments. They did not want additional buildings downtown with very small apartments. They wanted to have some type of handle on the minimum square footage. Because had the special use been approved, but the subsequent variance denied, then the owner could have put in efficiency apartments under the zoning code.
Okay.
And they did not want additional efficiency apartments in the downtown area.
So it's a bit of a, we'll allow this, but only if, even though it otherwise would have been acceptable?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we know what... Were efficiency apartments originally requested? Only one bedroom?
No, they were not.
Okay. Do we have any... Go ahead, other questions.
Based on the findings, and if you guys are okay with the findings, then I'm okay with this.
Okay, this would be ordinance 14-10. Special use permit to allow residential use above the first floor, commercial use at 209 North Second Street. Motion by trustee Forsyth?
Yes.
Seconded. Seconded by trustee Reiker. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Reiker?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carries. That is approved. Now, related to that is the variance that George talked about. Go ahead.
This variance application proposes a single three-bedroom apartment and two one-bedroom apartments. Zoning code requires three-bedroom apartments to have a minimum of 1,200 square feet, and one-bedroom apartments to have a minimum of 800 square feet. The architect's letter and floor plan indicates the three-bedroom unit has 1,420 square feet, while the one-bedroom apartments have 600 and 650 square feet each. Therefore, the single three-bedroom apartment applies to the zoning code, while the two one-bedroom apartments do not. Planning and zoning commission forwards a favorable recommendation, five I's, zero N's, to approve the petition with the following conditions: One, incorporate all the conditions established in the special use permit; and two, incorporate the approved, submitted and approved floor plan.
And I believe that the three-bedroom apartment that the owner is going to be living in? Correct, with my kids. That's why it's larger. And it makes sense. Trustees, have any questions?
No, again, if they're okay with the findings, and it's a favorable recommendation, then I'm going with it.
The approval downtown's worth it.
Yeah. This would be ordinance 14-11. Action on a petition for variance in minimum square footage requirements for two apartments of 600 square feet and 650 square feet as submitted in the floor plan.
Motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Reiker. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Reiker?
Yes.
Mr. Wickers?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carries, and the variance is also approved. Thank you for approving our downtown. Thank you. Next item is the consideration of possible action on scope of work for the 2014 sidewalk program.
This year, the village budgeted $50,000 for the sidewalk program. The village received a $100,000 grant for infrastructure improvements from the state of Illinois. We then combined the two revenues for a total of $150,000 for construction of the Wilmington Road sidewalk project. However, the grant agreement process must go through several state agencies, which can take several months. We cannot begin work on the grant project until we receive an approved grant agreement from the state. It appears increasingly unlikely we will receive the agreement in time for this construction season. Accordingly, the board may want to consider using the budget of $50,000 for local sidewalks as we normally do, and budget $50,000 next year for the Wilmington Road project. If that is the board's wish, staff has generated a project scope for review and bidding. We understand there are sidewalks in need of repair scattered throughout the village, but the scope tries to maximize long runs in place of individual properties for construction efficiencies and lower costs. And you see, the scopes proposed are 101 North Second to 113 North Second, 416 East Crawford to east to Route 50, 312 West North to 328 West North, 332 West North to 110 North Conrad, which is the corner of North and Conrad. And we have one small section at 104 East Main where there's a sidewalk near Catch Basin that's in need of repair. That is the proposed scope. If the bids come in favorably, and there are specific places in town we can accommodate, we will try to do that to utilize the $50,000.
When did that money have to be used for the grant? When did it have to be used by?
I was told there is no deadline, because it's not... It was approved by the state legislature as, you know, we received one of several grants that were approved by the state legislatures that were... They were... It was actually a, what they call a member initiative. In other words, this isn't tied to federal dollars. This isn't tied to a specific program. This was when they floated the bond for some of the infrastructure improvements two or three years ago. This is some of the money from that. So I have been told on more than one occasion that there is no, you know, if we wait till next year, it's not going to be a problem.
As long as we get the $50,000 back in it for next year, I'll make the motion to approve the scope of work. Motion by trustee Hack to approve the scope of work, seconded by trustee Forsyth. Clerk, please call a roll. Getting ahead of you, aren't we? All right, we'll slow down.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiker?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and the revised sidewalk program, as listed there, will be moved forward. And the $50,000 for the grant on the Wilmington Road project will move to next year's budget. All right, salt contract.
In the past few years, we have purchased road salt through cooperative purchasing, purchasing with the state of Illinois. The state bid process this year has not gone well with poor bid results. After two bid lettings, there is still no contract with Peatone. Road salt contracts statewide are extremely unsettled. Present time, we have salt remaining from last year's bid. We have reserves in storage with enough salt for several snowfall events. However, we still need to select a vendor to replenish stocks for the upcoming season. We typically commit to around 150 tons. The village has contracted several salt... Contacted several salt suppliers. We have two quotes with more promised. Considerations in selecting a road salt vendor are price, prompt delivery, minimum quantity commitment, effectiveness of the salt, delivery schedule. Is it delivered all at once? Or preferred can be spread deliveries throughout the season and length of contract. Last year, the village paid, under the state bid, $52.56 a ton. Prices this year from all vendors have increased dramatically, doubling or tripling. Some vendors have temporarily stopped providing quotes. One or two vendors have said they may start providing salt quotes in the next 30 days, but there are no commitments as to price or availability at that time. Meanwhile, current price, cost, and availability may expire, and a point in fact will expire after tomorrow, basically. And we would have to get new quotes, which may be the same or may not. What you have before you is a quote from Midwest Salt. The one price is $108. That is assuming we prepay a lump sum PO check. Pardon me. If we do not prepay for the quote for the entire order, it's $118 per ton.
Okay.
And we are committed to buying the full amount. This is for 200 tons, but Mr. Hank tells me he can get the same deal for 150 tons. However, with Midwest, we have to buy a whole 150 tons. Okay?
I noticed that also, the delivery to begin early September and completed no later than October 15th of this year?
Yeah.
In other words, do we have storage capacity if we do that?
We will have... Currently, we have our bin full, our barn full. We have some out at the Peatone Township. I think we can have some more storage capacity at Peatone Township. I'm not sure we've got 150 tons of storage capacity at Peatone Township, so that is an issue. The other quote we have in hand is from Chicago Salt Company. That quote is $132 a ton. This road salt is treated. Canadian road salt, it's pink, and it goes down to zero degrees. The quote from Midwest Salt is pure road salt. It's not treated. Okay, so it will not go down to zero degrees.
What are they treating it with, George?
I'm sorry?
What are they treating it with? Is it just a calcium?
I've tried to find out. Between the storms and everything else, we've not had time to get back with them, but I'm assuming it is. They are willing to say, we'll reserve 150 tons for you. You have to get four or five loads anyway. You know, you are committed to getting four or five loads. However, if at the end of the year, at the end of the contract time, you've only used 100 tons, we will only charge you for 100 tons. And they are a little more open to delivering when we need it rather than all at once.
Is our application equipment able to meet the recommendations to increase the spinner speed and decrease the feeder speed? Are we capable of doing that?
To some extent, yes.
So under those circumstances, do you know if we... It says we'll save 25% basically, which would reduce... I think they would actually make it cheaper than the other...
It would... Yes, it would make the effective cost of the product much less than 132 tons per dollars per ton.
There are several things that a second proposal that I like, opposed in the first proposal. The fact that we don't have to have it all now. The fact that it's pop... I mean, I don't know a lot about salt, so... But from what they're saying, and with the forecast of an even harsher winter this year than last year, I think there's zero temperature salt maybe needed. And again, I'm not a salt expert, so they could just be putting pink dye in it.
Seesaw.
Yeah.
Well, saving the 25% is solely up to the operator. You see, it's a truck. I mean, you still... With my experience, even treating the salt, I mean, it's still only going to work to a certain temperature. Regular road... The regular road salt works, they say, till 17 degrees. And if this is treated with calcium chloride, it will work to zero, but you're still... The way they've salted here in the past has always been just the intersections. So you're still putting the same amount of salt down. The net difference for the 200 tons is $4,600 between the two bids.
You're still going to pay anywhere from $56 to $80 a ton more than you should have to last year. More.
Yeah. It's not just us. I think that...
No, it's everybody.
Well, that last bid last Monday, I think only eight communities in the state received a bid, so they're all going to be the same.
So what's your pleasure? We've talked about all the different things. Do you think we ought to go?
The nice thing is with the Chicago Salt Company, the thing stuff is, if they're actually treating with calcium chloride, you're almost money ahead, because you're actually getting treated salt. You don't have to put a tank in there to treat it with calcium. It'll work colder. Like Chris said, if it's that harsh of a winter, it'll work. You're not going to need all the traffic and sunlight.
One thing to consider too, though, is I know last year, for example, there were a number of propane companies which ran into distribution problems, and they essentially had contracts in their... I'm sorry, clauses in their contract which allowed them to back out of their pricing if there was a force majeure or some sort of catastrophically cold conditions, which essentially is what they claimed. And one of my concerns might be that we might have a promise to deliver additional salt unless it's been delivered to someone else. That's something to consider as well, is that those things do happen. So if we have a year in which a lot of salt is needed by a lot of different communities, a decision may have to be made by the company providing it, who they're going to give it to.
I believe that the way most companies handle that is they spread it evenly among their contracts.
I guess said that in this Midwest Salt company.
Yeah.
You could take your 150 now, they don't care.
I mean, one concern we do have is storage for a full year's supply. I mean, historically, we've gotten four or five loads over the course... Four or five deliveries, I guess is a better way to say that, over the course of a contract here. It's pretty seldom we try to get... We get all of it at one time.
And how long is... Maybe you can answer this, but how long... Is there a life on salt? Or once you have it, you store it, it's...
As long as you have it under a roof. I mean, you can store it for quite a while. Once it starts getting damp and moist, that's when it clumps up.
So having good storage is essential.
I just... I just like the idea of paying for what we're using, not, you know, getting 150 tons and you have a bus winter and not using it, and now you're storing all this extra salt that you can't pay for, not just storing, it's paying for.
Better off be penny wise than dollar foolish, you know, to see what's... What makes it good is salt is pretty viable. If you're getting loads as you need it, rather than store it up on time and run the risk of excess, it's getting that salt locked up solid, then you need a stick of dynamite to blow it apart.
I just think the second contract fits our needs better.
To be honest, I think the coloration too. I mean, in some respects, that could help as a driver, see if the intersections are consulted. We might be made fun of.
No, we're supporting other pain causes.
There we go.
Awesome.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Pick a company and talk with each company. And the motion is to... The motion is to waive competitive bidding.
Yes. Oh, there's currently competitive bidding happening under the state program. So the motion will be to waive competitive bidding and accept this proposal. Okay.
You have the wording in the motion? All right. So who do we put in the blank? We're waiving.
Why are we waiving competitive bidding? Just because it's under a certain amount, or what?
It's right at the border of requiring formal bidding. And if we do formal bidding, we'll, we'll be awarding this contract in December.
I understand.
Yeah.
But we're, we're, it's not a company-specific thing? It's just that we're...
No, no. It's just, right, so it's, it's the, the way that these bids came about, rather than a, a formal RFP, and the fact that the prices are a little hard to compare with each other. The best practice in this situation is just to waive competitive bidding, which you can do statutorily, and it's, it's not a problem.
I'll make the motion to waive competitive bidding and go with Chicago Salt Company as the second contract.
Motion by trustee Forsythe.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Riker to waive competitive bidding and go with the proposal from Chicago Salt Company. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carries, and that will be the company that we vote. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of a replacement police sergeant.
With the recent retirement of Sergeant Shadwell, the police department has no supervisory staff other than Chief Moore. Chief Moore has proposed a candidate for this position. This appointment is to fill a vacancy, not an additional employee. The position, the, the name that Chief Moore has proposed is Matt Moore. The hourly rate would be thirty-one dollars and seventy-three cents, effective August 31st,
So I will entertain a motion to appoint Matt Moore to the position of police sergeant at the hourly rate of thirty-one seventy-three, effective August 31st, 2014.
No move.
Motion by trustee Wicker.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Riker. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, and Sergeant Matt Moore is now promoted. We come to correspondence, communications, petitions. Couple of things. We have had storms for the last week or so that have taken down a lot of branches, and the crew that we've got out there started branch pickup. Actually, they, they did a lot of stuff right after the storm, taking down trees that were blocking. And they have also, with the storm today, they went down my street today, picked up all the branches, and when I went home a little while ago, there's a few more branches down because of this last storm. I think it's, if everyone is patient, we will pick up all the branches, most of the branches this week, or the branch pickup next week on the other side of town. Actually, they're trying to get everything done this week to get all the storm stuff. So hoping folks will pay, give, have a little patience with, the branches may sit on your heartway for a little while, but they will be gone within the next week or so. There's another item, too, that downtown, the storm came through, and most of the wooden flagpoles that we had on the streetlights, a lot of them got broken off. Most of them, I think, we have found. And we're evaluating replacement of them, but it's highly likely that they won't be replaced until spring, and we'll do them all. So...
As long as they're up by the fourth. As long as they're up by the fourth.
They will be up. They're, they're up for the Memorial Day.
Memorial Day.
That's true, yeah. We usually keep them up, keep them up until Veterans Day. And so those are the two start and stop days. We also have a farmer's market coming up this Saturday, eight o'clock till noon. We've got a few more vendors this time.
Vendors, couple more vendors?
And please make an effort to stop there. The stuff is good. We got a lot of, a lot of good fruit and vegetables the last time, and this is something I think we can keep building because of the, the initial success of the, what happened the last time. And so I encourage everybody to, it's eight o'clock till noon over by the Legion and the railroad, and please stop by and make it worth the while to the vendors, and you'll, you'll get some good stuff out of it to, to go along with that. Any other announcements that we've got relative to things being due, or chief?
I'd just like to update the board. Since you've promoted Matt Moore at the next board meeting, I'd just take a few moments of your time. During my tenure being chief, we have never made a promotion, but I think it's a very distinguishing event. So I would like to offer Matt the opportunity to bring his family and his father and them, and just have Donna reissue the oath of office to him, and issue him a sergeant badge, a small formality in front of the board at the next board meeting.
That would be great. It would be great. Show of support for everybody. Okay, other announcements? Hearing done, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the August 25th, 2014 Village into a board meeting.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Forsythe.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Heck to adjourn the meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
We are officially adjourned.